Hello, us. Are you coming?
I have some interesting information, but I don't want to be on camera. Question needs to be asked is.
Hell can't get it.
It is now 5:30 and I will ask our city administrator Greg Elliott to please give his infamous Zoom speech. Thank you.
Famous or infamous depending on your perspective. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. I'm City Administrator Greg Elliott. It's 5:30 and I'd like to address a few things before Mayor Heath officially calls a special meeting to order. For much of the meeting, we asked that participants other than the commissioners and staff mute themselves to allow the commission to have their discussions and conduct their business. That will also help to minimize any background noise that may be disruptive. Opportunities for public comment will be offered at a certain point during the meeting. At that point, participants can unmute themselves and will have an opportunity to address the commission. The three-minute rule continues to be in effect for public comment period. When it is time for public comment, please identify your name and address for the record prior to making your statement. Once we formally begin the meeting, the format and structure will be exact same as an in-person meeting and we will work through our agenda as usual. All commission rules and procedures remain in effect. We've talked in the past about Zoom bombing. This is where a virtual meeting is interrupted by people who fill the screen with objectionable content. This occurs during our meeting tonight. We will disconnect the meeting and restart after a few minutes. Attendees can reconnect via the same link. We will also turn over the video of the meeting to law enforcement for investigation. Our agenda packet is available on our website, which is www.adriancity.com. Thank you all for participating tonight. Mayor Heath, I will turn it over to you.
I now call to order the Adrian City Commission's special meeting for June 1st, 2021. If everyone would please rise for a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please, Robin.
Mayor Heath.
President.
Mr. Halt.
President.
Mr. Roberts.
President.
Mr. Watson.
President.
Mr. Strayer.
President.
Commissioner Gows. See him.
Say it one more time. See, I don't know if you.
Commissioner Gows. Ordinance. There you are.
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Castleberry.
Present.
All commission members present.
Welcome.
On our regular agenda, we have ordinances, ordinance 21-005. It's a second reading and consideration of an ordinance to amend Chapter 46, the Adrian City Code, to add Section 46-207 exemptions and to create a new Article 12, mobile food vending. May I get a motion to it? Oh, actually, I first need to hear public comments. Sorry about that. Well, let me get a motion first. Can I get a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Who to adopt the ordinance? Watson.
Second, Castleberry.
Are there any public comments? I think there was a letter that was sent to you, Mayor, by all the restaurant owners. Did you receive that? No, I did not, but.
It came in late today.
Oh, that's probably why. You can address it right now during public comment. Basically, it was a combination of all the restaurant owners downtown and it had some research in it about what other cities do. And I don't have it right in front of me. I can go get it, but it went through quite a few things and quite a few suggestions. And we were hoping that it would be read to all the commissioners before, for the public comment.
Mayor, we all received that. It was delivered at 4:11 PM. And it's not necessarily in relation to tonight's actions, but more the resolutions.
That's what I wondered, because we, yeah, I wondered that. Okay, we'll finish the public comment and then we'll do commissioner comments. Thank you.
Did everyone receive that? Did everyone receive the letter?
Yes, so I guess we did receive it late, but we will, we'll address that during commissioner comments then. Thank you. Is there any more public comment?
Just to remind, to remind everyone, Mary Sealer, you're supposed to state your name and your address.
Yes.
Before you start speaking.
Okay.
Say your name and address if you want the letter read.
Do you want me to do that now?
Yes, please go ahead. Thank you.
Okay, Mary Sealer, 3285 Martin Drive, but I'm, I'm here representing the downtown Dempsey's, 136 East Mommy Street.
And my name is Al Walkerson. Address is 6164 Gloucester in Canton. I have, we have a business at 125 East Mommy, the Governor Crosswell Tea Room, and we're here to make sure the commissioners are thinking about, business owners also during this food truck situation, so. Oh, hold on one time. Done. And also, Robin, did you get the, that we could, that we could read the letter into record?
Yes, you can read it right now during public comment. Yes, you can, Al. Go ahead.
I said, I sent it to Robin.
Oh.
My eyes aren't that good to read this whole thing.
Yeah. This is normally that if, you know, a member of the public wants to read their communication, I will let them do that. If not, we acknowledge receipt of it by the commissioners and keep it in the record.
Hold on, hold on. My good eyes is going to read you here.
But I don't want to be on camera.
Oh, God.
Please state your name and, oh, and address and then you can read it. You don't have to be on camera. You could be off.
I guess I want to be on camera. I'm Phyllis Wilkerson at 6164 Gloucester Avenue or Gloucester Drive. And is it three minutes that I get?
Yes.
Okay. I'm in Canton, Michigan, and I'm owning the Governor Crosswell Tea Room. Dear Commissioners, Downtown Restaurant Owners understand that the commission is discussing food trucks in the community, including potentially locating them in downtown. We would like the commission to bear in mind the following information as decisions regarding the placement of food trucks in downtown are being considered. Downtown operators of brick and mortar restaurants have invested well north of $4 million in building purchases and renovations in the last decade. These have resulted in significant and long-term improvements in the tax base and have been a driving force in the renovation and rehabilitation and revitalization of downtown. Downtown restaurants pay annual property taxes, parking assistance, and utility payments in excess of $100,000 annually to the city of Adrian. Downtown restaurants employ over 100 local residents in their restaurants. On-street and on-lot parking are at a premium, yet the city has recently decided to utilize downtown on-street parking for parklets. It is now considering providing public lot parking to food trucks. Food trucks have no, pay no property tax, parking assessments, or utility payments. They employ very small numbers of employees and are not required to have any ties or commitments to the community. While we think it's critically important to protect businesses, business partners that have made the downtown vibrant, that will build a tax base and have encouraged significant investment in beautiful downtown buildings that provide significant employment, that bring people downtown. We recognize that with appropriate rules, food trucks can play a role in our downtown as well. The National League of Cities have done extensive research on how to successfully integrate food trucks in downtowns and has identified the following as best practices. Communities should reach out to all stakeholders, brick and mortar, and food trucks for input and provide opportunities for the two groups to meet together to find common ground. Communities should begin with pilot projects before making long-term decisions. Downtown should look to cluster food trucks together. Downtown should use food truck clusters to address blighted areas in downtowns. Downtown should use private sites for food truck clusters. Given the above and given that our restaurants are still struggling to emerge from the most challenging year in our histories, we encourage the commission to adopt the following. In general, we support food trucks.
I'm very sorry, but your time is up right now.
All right, well, they can read restaurant.
Okay, I would be appreciated if.
My name's Ben Rosebrook. I am the, my address is 3804 Tanner Marie Drive in Adrian, Michigan, but I represent the Buzz Cafe and Marketplace in downtown Adrian, 110 East Mommy Street. And I would like to finish what Phyllis had started reading.
All right.
Given the above and that our restaurants are still struggling to emerge from the most challenging year in our histories, we encourage the commission to adopt the following. In general, we support food trucks for special events, including Art Delicious Blues and Brews, First Fridays and participants, or participation with downtown food establishments in particular with respect to the locations of the food trucks. We support the location of food trucks in specific locations for specific and limited times for a minimum of four hours to provide operator time to set up and clean up and be open for sufficient time to generate income. We request that commission, that the commission not place food trucks in any of the core city parking lots, including the North and South Winter Street Lots, the Church Street Lot, the North and South Toledo Street Lot, or the Pearl Street Lot. And we encourage the commission to look at two locations on West Mommy Street to meet the best practices identified by the National League of Cities that are privately owned and blighted. Those two areas could be the Adrian Plaza Parking Lot or the former gas station located across from the Adrian Plaza. The downtown restaurant owners would be pleased to meet and discuss this issue with the commission and with food truck owners. We strongly encourage the commission to support any business that is actually investing in our community and in downtown. Absent that private investment, downtown would look as if it did 15 years ago. Mostly vacant, little foot traffic, deteriorating buildings, low tax base, and not much hope for the future. Sincerely, the businesses of downtown.
Thank you, Ben.
Could I make one connection, correction to that, Ben? This is Mary Sealer, 136 East Mommy from downtown Dempsey's. I think the First Fridays was supposed to be deleted from that since a lot of us do promotions for First Friday and we would be promoting for food trucks instead of our own places then.
Thank you for the correction.
No problem. Any other public comment?
Yes, I have one. Eric Funk, 6217 North Rogers Highway. We own Funky Dog's food truck. By reading what's going on with the paper and I understand what's going on in downtown, that there are other businesses as the Grasshopper has a food truck. The Brenda's Tax Max, she has a food trailer. I have a restaurant at the mall, which the mall got condemned. And because of that, I have a contract with the mall that they gave me permission to park on their property, which till my contract is run out until new owners took over. That's why we're parking out there. And on behalf speaking for other food truck people too, we do not want to come downtown and park in front of other businesses. We lived in this community all our lives. We don't want to take away from Sauce or any other restaurant. I'm not picking out Sauce, but there's multiple other ones. We want to see them thrive. Only reason we want to come downtown is to do special events. Like Nova's does a car show. They contacted me to come down and do a food truck because car shows go with hot dogs. That's what the reason I've been told and I actually have a hot dog truck. So I called the city of Adrian, tried to call them to get a permit that I was going to pay for to park in their parking lot next to their building, and then all this has happened. We do not want to park downtown where there's, there's not enough money for us to make in food trucks. That's why we go outside to the outside areas as like I was parking at the mall. I was parking in Southland Plaza, which is the township of Madison with no problems. I just want to let you guys know that we do not want to go park downtown during the week to make money or take away from other businesses. That's not what we want to do. We want to do special events like Art of Palooza. All the festivities downtown, we're not out to take anybody out. Another thing, you got 3,000 to 5,000 people to come downtown. We want to see all the businesses succeed. You can't take all the overflow and we do different foods. We don't do the same as like Dempsey's. We don't do pizza. We don't do Italian food. We don't do tacos. Now, there are taco trucks, but they're not going to bring their trucks downtown when they already have restaurants there. So I've been invited by Madison to park anywhere I want to because to help their community out, to get people to come out in their parking lots, different areas for people to see the different stuff. We will pay up to a certain limit that's reasonable for a permit to go downtown. That's what we want to do. So again, we do not want to park downtown in parking lots unless we are invited by the city of Adrian. But that's why we go through and ask for permits.
Thank you. Your time is up. And just to remind everyone before there's more public comment that once you have spoken, then your time is over. So if there is any other public comment, we will take that.
Yes, Mayor and Commissioner, this is Don Taylor, 475 Meadowbrook Drive. I do support food trucks under certain circumstances, obviously, especially at Art Delicious. I'm really kind of frustrated that you've gotten this far and you haven't gotten the parties together. All the, all the restaurant owners sent you a letter. You got it 4:11 today. And if somebody hadn't, if Mary hadn't joined the call, how would anybody know about that? Seems to me that's something you should have considered in your deliberation. And well, initially, I didn't think anybody was going to be able to read it, but two of you were able to take care of that. And also, all these food truck vendors, I'm hearing what they have to say and they want to play nice. Why haven't we had a meeting of all these folks and all the restaurant owners to hash this out? That's how we ought to be doing this. I don't want to tell you how to do your job, but you know, I don't back away from doing that. Let's just start engaging everybody in this process. Thank you.
Hearing no more public comment, are there any commissioner comments?
Mayor, I guess I'll make a couple of comments.
Commissioner Halt, go ahead.
When we first started talking about food trucks, I was not anti-food truck. What I was is, is anti-putting a food truck in front of a restaurant downtown. Myself owning a restaurant, understanding that, that my own store being closed for six weeks and my business is mostly takeout, we are still going through the long-lasting effects of the pandemic. My only position was simple. Once they're back to 100%, then we can get a, you know, then we can get the zoning right, put them in a distinctive area, and so be it. One of the people that just talked on their social media page proved my point. I'm going to park next to Morning Fresh, bring a, a, a food truck to sell, to sell treats and to pull from the brick and mortar. And I think Al Walkerson's position of he pays property tax holds a lot of merit. Again, we want to be collaborative, but also, you know, it's my job is to look out for the people that, that have made substantial investment in the city of Adrian. So again, I've had a food truck in my north location, Maria's Taco, Taco Truck. It did, it did really well. I am not anti-food truck, but I, I will say this is that, is that it's our job to, to try to get, get everybody together. And I think Don's right. I think, you know, we're rushing to this a little bit because we want to get, we have Juneteenth coming up. We have Art Delicious coming up. We have some big events. So, so, you know, I do support this based on the fact that I think it's, it's a, it can be amended as we go forward, but we have to get something on the books so these events can get going and get their stuff planned. So again, this is, it's an ordinance. It can always be amended. I sympathize to the downtown businesses as myself is a, also I've had those hardships, but this is something we can get on the books. We can move forward and we can adjust it as we go.
And I would just like to also, just to clarify, you know, location, pricing for permits, all of that is not occurring tonight. Okay? This is, this is the, the ordinance to allow food trucks, but none of that has been decided yet. Like where, when it, what, what special events it will be at, where the locations will be, that is a discussion that will be. That is a discussion that will be coming at our next pre-meeting and leading into our regular meetings. So just, just to clarify, tonight is not setting any locations. It's not setting, you know, where food trucks went and where they'll be allowed at this point. It's just the, the actual ordinance to get the food truck, the mobile food vending, you know, because right now there was nothing that addressed mobile food vending at all up to this point on public property. It only addressed it on private property. So I just wanted to clarify that. Commissioner Roberts, if you want to add something up. Now, it's commissioner comments right now. Sorry.
I'm sorry.
Commissioner Roberts, did you?
Yes. So in the ordinance right now, and I apologize, I'm struggling to find it because I'm trying to listen and do to and read at the same time. I believe it still states that it has to not be closer than 100 feet to a, an established business. Oh, here it is in section O. So mobile vending units shall not be parked on public property within 100 feet of an existing permanently established restaurant or food service business during the hours when such establishment is open to the public for business, unless the vendor is affiliated with that business or otherwise has their permission to do so. So in the ordinance right now, there is no way that a food truck is going to come and park in front of your building unless it's a special event, unless it's Art Delicious or any of those things. Where, what we will be discussing at our next meeting is where can they take place? Which parking lots can they take place? Looking at that 100-feet limit and figuring out, okay, it's 100 feet from Mary's place, Sealer's place. It's 100 feet from here. It's 100, you know, figuring out where going to be the best spots for these food trucks. So they don't take away from your businesses. I don't want that to happen because I come to your businesses too and I want them to be open. So tonight is just to get that initial ordinance going because we do have those events coming up. And we have heard from food truck vendors over the last month that can I come? Can I not come? Are we breaking, you know, city rules? Are we not? So we're trying to get this established so that we can be all on the same page. Also, I, you know, I don't know if any of you attend the DDA meetings, but this has been discussed at the DDA meetings. And we did, you know, ask for input at those meetings, but my understanding is not, there weren't any restaurant owners during those meetings. So unfortunately, you know, there was a place for input, but that, that you weren't, you weren't there at those meetings. So, you know, we would like to hear your, your input on this. And we, you know, this is the second reading. We could have heard it at the last meeting too. So we are interested in hearing how far away, where should they be? So I did get a chance to quickly skim through, through the letter tonight before tonight's meeting. I think it was well put together and I appreciate all of those thoughts. And I do, I know I will be taking that into consideration when we talk about where we should allow these food trucks. That's what I have to say.
Hearing no more commissioner comments, I have a motion from Commissioner Watson with a second from Commissioner Castleberry. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hell.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Commissioner Gows.
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Ordinance adopted by unanimous vote.
It is now time for public comment. Just to reiterate, there is a three-minute time limit. And for the record, please state your name and address.
Al Walkerson, 6164 Gloucester, Canton, Michigan. I have a restaurant on Mommy Street. I grew up in Adrian. We came back 10 years ago, had a meeting with the horsemen, as my wife and I did, Kim and Dave, and, and said, do we really want to do this? We committed to come down. We both probably spent $500,000 and never once 10 years ago was food trucks mentioned. Never. And I guess I go back to what Don Taylor said. We're easily accessible. You know, Mary just said something about DDA meetings. I was on the DDA for eight years. It was never mentioned there. All it takes is a simple phone call. We all have cell phones. We would be, we're down there once a week anyway. You know, I've never ever been contacted by anyone about the Commission. I was contacted today by Al and Lad about the letter. Is this in our, is this in our plan going forward? Are we, you know, we could become the food cat or food truck capital? But let's put that in writing. That's our plan. I want to stop talking because I'm frustrated right now. I think I've thrown enough money out the window. We've sat empty for a year and a half. And we still can only have 50% of our, of our audience. It's been fun down there. It's been, we, I think we've drawn a lot of people to the area from out of town, from Ohio, Indiana. And please think this through. And again, I'm not against food trucks, but let's just think this through. Let's, you know, let's let the businesses downtown recover a little bit. My God, people are underwater right now. And this is our, this is the thing that we want to, you know, base our future on right now is food trucks, you know, there's places food trucks can go, you know, so thank you for listening.
Ben Rose Brock, 3804 Tannemurray Drive, Adrian, Michigan. I represent the Buzz Cafe and Marketplace in, one of the owners of the Buzz Cafe and Marketplace in downtown Adrian. I am for food trucks. I am also for communication and clear consistency around communication with the, the local restaurant owners. And I, Mary, I appreciate what you said about the DDA meeting. I also appreciate what Alan said. We are working hard to recover from the worst pandemic of our lives. And for me, having a full-time job and basically two major full-time jobs, it is impossible for me as a restaurant owner to get to the DDA meetings or to get to the commissioner meetings on every single event. So I would invite each one of the commissioners, because I've not seen many of you in our shop, to come down and meet with local business owners. Introduce yourselves. Come on in. We'd love to have you. And then maybe we can talk about some of these issues. I am at the Buzz every Saturday and Sunday, working my full-time job plus that job. So we would love to see you. And if there are things that we can talk about, especially this food truck, which could have a big impact even at 100 feet from our local businesses. I'm all for it. I want to make sure that downtown re, is revitalized as much as it can be. And I think food trucks can be a big part of that. We just want to have communication with you, which we haven't had yet. And I understand going to those meetings is important, but coming to see us who are building the tax, tax rule, paying our utilities and our, keeping ourselves open. The city is getting a lot of benefit from that. So we would love to see you in our own shops and restaurants. That's all.
Mayor and Commissioners, Don Taylor, 475 Meadowbrook Drive. To follow up on Al and Ben's comments. Amen, brothers. You know, I, I don't know why we can't communicate better. Right now, my Art Delicious committee is working with several restaurants to have a discussion about how we can help them during Art Delicious when they helped us for so many years. And, and we're picking up the phone and calling those people and arranging a meeting. So I don't know. I, Al, you're absolutely right. Ben, you're right. I mean, everybody's got a cell phone. Everybody has a location. Why don't we get everybody together? I mean, Funky Dog is here. We know how to get ahold of him. Somebody should have asked him or all the other vendors that are around. I'm just frustrated by that process. And it just doesn't seem like it could be as open and as welcoming and as thorough as it should be. Thank you.
Hearing no more public comment, I'm going to move on to commissioner comments. Are there any commissioner comments? I will start out with saying that a few of the food truck vendors did reach out to me right going into this past weekend. And I was going to be meeting with them before the next meeting. So I have already asked Michelle Dewey at the city of Adrian to give me all the emails and contacts for all of the restaurants downtown. And we will try to get everyone together before this next meeting, including all of the food truck vendors as well. Because I was already getting that arranged with them personally, myself anyway. So I will make sure that that does happen. So we will get that done so that we can have that meeting and see where it goes from there and get some good feedback. We will not, we would not be allowed to bring all of the commission there. I will tell you that. We cannot have, we cannot have a quorum present or it constitutes an actual city meeting. So I would be allowed to bring a, a couple commissioners with me. And so I will put that invite out once we get that, that date narrowed down and get that figured out of when we can all get together. It might have to be via Zoom. I realize that and that's fine as well. But just so that, to make you aware, we cannot have the entire commission there, just to be clear. So. But we can pass the word around with the few that are there. Are there any other commissioner comments? Hearing no more, may I get a motion to adjourn?
Moved, Watson.
Support, help.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.